I got here early. For some reason, I had eight o'clock in my mind.
Well, that's a beautiful fireplace behind you.
Oh, thanks. Yeah, this is down in our basement. We had it. Finished it a few years ago, and the guy that did the work is just, he just does a really nice job.
Yeah, he really did.
The, uh, that beam, the. Yeah, the mantel piece there is a, was a piece of oak out of a barn in Wisconsin that belonged to a friend of my wife. She, when they tore the barn down, they gave her that, that beam there.
Nice reuse of it.
Yeah.
Ah, boy. So how's your summer going?
Going well.
Oh, good.
How about yours?
Good.
Good.
I'm in Saratoga today. My brothers are in town. We've been fly fishing. So since I'm done with the meeting, I'm gonna go try to catch up with them. You know.
Oh, I got a text that they can hear us talking.
Well, we're not discussing business.
Right.
We're not doing anything improper, so.
So how's Saratoga right now? Nice weather over there?
It's hot, um, and they could use some rain. You know, river's pretty low. And, uh, so. Oh, yeah, I got the same text. We can hear you both right now. All right. They need to get the meeting started.
Yeah.
There we are.
Let's go. Let's open the meeting. Call order. First thing will be roll call.
President Cavelo.
President.
Commissioner Torgerson.
President.
Commissioner Bowle.
President.
Commissioner Schiffer. Commissioner Broussard.
Here.
Vice President Rithaler. He will be joining on the phone, and he might be a little bit late. Commissioner Francisco is absent, excused. He's dealing with Cheyenne Frontier Days. Commissioner Wildcat. She will also be joining on the phone and maybe a couple of minutes late. Senator Cold. Representative Davis. And Governor's Liaison, Mr. Lebanon. He appears to be absent. And Commissioner Kura. President Cavelo, you have a quorum.
Thank you. Very good. Would you give us a welcome, please?
Welcome to the July 18th, 2025 Special Meeting of the Wyoming Gaming Commission. The primary mission of the Wyoming Gaming Commission is the protection of the wagering public and the health, safety, and welfare of the participants in all lawful gaming and permutual activity. Individuals who wish to address the commission will be recognized and called on by the president to speak. After the president has recognized you, please clearly state your name and the name of the organization you represent prior to addressing the commission. All comments, questions, and responses must flow through the president by addressing the president each time you wish to speak. This procedure ensures an orderly flow of discussion during the commission meeting. All meetings of the governing body of an agency are public meetings, open to the public, except as otherwise provided by Wyoming Statute 64403A. This meeting is being held live in Casper, on Zoom, and is available for video streaming on the YouTube link. The commission may open an executive session pursuant to Wyoming Statute 164405A. Inclusion on the agenda does not necessarily constitute a commission action.
Very good. Thank you, Nick. We appreciate that. Um, we'll now stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, moving right along. Before you, item number two, you have the agenda. Is there any consideration or possible actions with regards to the agenda? Be looking for a motion to approve the agenda. We have a motion from Commissioner Broussard. Do we hear a second? Second from Commissioner Schiffer. Any discussion? Hearing none will proceed to vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. The agenda has been approved. Item number three, approval of the consent agenda. Um, we have, uh, items A, B, and C, including items, number four, A through B, items number 10, C, and item number 12, A1.
I'd like to approve the consent agenda.
We have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented. We have a second. Any discussion? Anything from anyone that they would like to see removed? Hearing none will proceed to vote. All those in favor of approving the consent agenda as presented, pre, please say aye. Opposed, same sign. Okay, we have that. Moving on to item number four.
President Cavelo, item four is included in the consent list. So we'll be going to item number five, Wyoming Downs LLC. Uh, this is just general updates. It's verbal updates that I will give to you. If you'll recall, there was a consideration and approval of the transfer of a location, Senator Steakhouse in Cheyenne to the new build off of Exit Two. Uh, Senator Steakhouse was closed, voluntarily closed. They removed all those machines, and they're in storage now, waiting for the opening of the new build. Uh, that happened on June 22nd of 2025. I'll keep you posted on the build out of the new one. Wyoming Downs is currently in the final stages of their Sheridan transfer that was approved. Actually, it was approved in 2023. Uh, during this transfer, numerous renovations have been made to the new building. And at opening, Wyoming Downs is going to begin their rebranding process of their locations to the Lucky Sevens Gaming Parlors. Uh, this will continue on through all of their new properties as they start making those capital investments and improvements in those locations. Another update for simulcasting. Uh, for the first time that I'm aware of, all of the operators have entered into simulcast agreements. So when 307 was running their races in Gillette, Wyoming Downs and Wyoming Horse Racing was simulcasting 307's races across the state. Now that Wyoming Downs is running, 307 and Wyoming Horse Racing is simulcasting Wyoming Downs races. And when Wyoming Horse Racing is running in, uh, Rock Springs, Wyoming Downs and 307 will be simulcasting all of their races. So that's, that's pretty, uh, it's pretty cool to see, actually.
Excellent cooperation.
And one last thing, uh, early last week, I actually had to make a request to Wyoming Downs to increase, uh, staffing at their racetrack. And this is due to the amount of participation that is going on at Wyoming Downs. It's a good problem to have. They were actually, they needed another outrider during the week. They have so many people down there that are running horses and working that one outrider during the week couldn't handle it. So they've got that fixed and got two outriders now, but that's strictly because of the amount of participation in Evanston. It's incredible.
How exciting for horse racing in Wyoming.
Uh, Mr. President, that would be all that I have for item five.
Fantastic. Thank you. Moving on to item six, Wyoming Horse Racing LLC.
President Cavelo, item six A is the 2025 Live Race Officials for Wyoming Horse Racing. In your packet on page, I believe it's 25 in your, uh, packet, is the updated list. There have been changes to, um, the paddock judge and the identifier and the starter. That way, those positions don't overlap anymore. So this would be now just a recommendation of approval of the amended list.
Okay, we have the list before us. Anyone have any questions or comments? We do need to approve this, so.
I'll make a motion to approve the list as submitted.
We have a motion from Commissioner Broussard. Do I hear a second? We have a second from Commissioner Bowle. Is there, um, excuse me, Commissioner Kura, is there any discussion on, um, subject? Commissioners, from the public? Hearing none will proceed to vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Those opposed, nay? Carries. Thank you.
President Cavelo, item number six B is a request received from Wyoming Horse Racing for a new OTB location in Gillette, Wyoming. Um, on June 17th, the commission received the request from Holland and Hart Legal Counsel for Wyoming Horse Racing, requesting, uh, to be put on the agenda for the consideration of a new off-track wagering facility located at 95 Skyline Drive, Suite 120 in Gillette. Included with the request was, uh, amended simulcast permits adding this location, the rendered drawings of floor plans and building constructions, uh, rendered drawings of the security in place, the county resolution granting county approval, uh, Wyoming Horse Racing's financial statement, the feasibility study, a letter of support from the city of Gillette, as well as a lease agreement with the property owner. Uh, this request is for 100 terminals. The initial offering will be 85 in the location. Um, I believe, and they can correct me if I'm wrong, I believe that there will be an attempt to get a liquor license in the future. I don't think that's been procured yet, but there is a, there's some work towards that. Resolution, it's resolution number 3102 from Campbell County, authorized Wyoming Horse Racing to conduct permutual wagering on live horse racing, historic horse racing, and simulcast events at the property located at 95 Skyline Drive, Suite 120. Uh, the resolution was signed and dated on July 1st, 2025. Uh, there is a couple of stipulations in the county resolution uh, regarding the transfer. Wyoming Horse Racing cannot transfer the license without written approval of the county, uh, Campbell County Board of Commissioners. And it also has the right to revoke the resolution in the event that they determine Wyoming Horse Racing has a history of gross violations of Wyoming statutes or rules and regulations of the commission, or any local ordinances, or if their permits are suspended or revoked by the Gaming Commission. There's some other caveats in there as far as notice that they have. Uh, the current market in the city of Gillette has, there's four operational OTBs. The total terminal count for Campbell County is 372 terminals. And as of today, there are 270 operational terminals. Uh, Campbell County has a population of 47,026 people. 33,529 of those are over the age of 20. Unfortunately, census.gov doesn't go over 21. It just says 20. Uh, that's as of the 2024 numbers. That makes it the third most populous city in Wyoming. The current average terminal per person rate between the two larger population bases is one for every 81 people. Campbell County's rate is one active terminal for every 124 people currently. And if this were to be approved, it would change that to one to every 94 people, which is still under the, uh, terminal per person basis with the two larger counties. Um, the recent spectrum study noted that Campbell County is operating at 1.28% of AGI for HHR, which is actually outperforming the estimated statewide level of .052. And actually, over the statewide potential average of .65 by double. Uh, you will also see in your packet, there's a, a map layout of these locations. The ones in red are the open locations. The green little highlighted pin is the proposed location for this one. Uh, this location is about two, 2.2 miles in a straight line from their existing location and about 1,000 feet from Wyoming Downs's, uh, Westover Road location. Just, uh, just below the underpass. Um, Wyoming Horse Racing anticipates that this location will do approximately 57.2 million in handle, which would equate to $286,000 in proceeds to Campbell County, 286 to the city of Gillette, 143,000 to the state Lysera, 143 to the Gaming Commission, and 228,8 to the Breeders' Award. Uh, for 2024, the four current OTBs in Gillette had a combined total handle of uh, 200, just under $284 million. That's making the average handle about $71 million per location. So this location is anticipated to do about 24% less than the average handle of the existing four. Uh, let's see, moving on. On the 18th, I emailed the public notice seeking public comment to both the city of Gillette and Campbell County. Encourage them to post that to their, you know, their masses, their Facebook page, whatever, to solicit any sort of public comment. I did receive one comment. I received a phone call from a Gillette resident who was concerned that this location is being built next to a coffee shop. It's, uh, Scooter's Coffee, and then it's, the rest of the building would be, uh, Wyoming Horse Racing. She was concerned about that. She just thought that the coffee shop demographic was different than the HHR demographic. That was the only, um, concern that I received. I didn't receive any other concerns. And as I stated earlier, the city of Gillette also uh, submitted a letter of support that's in your packet. With that being said, I would stand for any questions on this request.
Any questions for Director Larimendi with regards to? Go ahead, Commissioner Broussard.
You were, were you reading off of page 33 and the fact that, uh, the demographic, the population per unit?
Correct, yeah. Did I say something wrong?
No, no, well, I, I wasn't trying. Was this an older document that was submitted with the application? Some were, some were not exactly the same, but I'm, I think what caught my eye is Uentha County. Is that saying that for every 18 people, there's an HHR machine? You gotta show me what you're looking at. Is this what we're reading off of?
Oh, okay, yeah. So this is from the Spectrum Gaming Study. So this is what we received in November.
But is that what I'm reading?
Popu, yep, that's correct.
Yep, all right.
That is correct. And that, for that location, the reason, get back over here, the reason that, uh, that number is so drastically different in Uentha County is because Uentha County is really looking to draw Utah residents for HHR. Yeah, so that's that touristic element to, to that. That's why there is one HHR terminal for every 18 people.
So it doesn't capture Salt Lake City?
No, it doesn't. Just the population of Uentha County.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions for Director Larimendi? Well, we're looking for action on this request.
Mr. President, I so moved that we, uh, accept this application.
We have a motion from Commissioner Kura. Do I hear a second?
Oh, second.
We have a second from Commissioner Schiffer. Do we have any discussion from any of the commissioners, present or online? Any discussion from the public? I've never been to a meeting that's so amenable.
Do you guys have questions?
Yeah, if, if I may, yeah, just briefly.
Certainly, go ahead.
President Cavelo, just a little bit of history. We don't typically look to add new locations inside the state, and this was such an unusual thing for us. The developer of the stores, including Scooters, actually reached out to us and said he thought we'd be a perfect fit to marry with the Scooter location. We said, look, we have no idea if this is going to be acceptable to the city, the county, or the commission, but we'll carry the water through the process. We did our analysis. We thought this had, you know, potential to be economically feasible. We were willing to take the risk. And, and that's really why we're here today. So it was kind of an odd thing. They, they approached us and said, okay, we'll, we'll give it a look. So.
Well, if there's nothing more for discussion, we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor of the motion to approve this request, please signify by saying aye. All those opposed, nay? Carries unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to item seven.
President Cavelo, item seven A is an update from 307 Horse Racing at the conclusion of their live, uh, race meet. I'll give that to Mr. Greer to talk about.
Good morning, Mr. Greer.
Good morning. Jack Greer with 307 Horse Racing. Uh, we had a great, successful season this year, which has concluded. For those of you that did make it, we sure appreciate it. Uh, and on behalf of the company, would like to thank all the horsemen that participated. Uh, it was a great meet. Uh, thank you to the commission, the staff, and stewards. I think everybody worked well together. As far as the race meet itself, it was a success in our own regard, but also for the state of Wyoming. Uh, we believe we broke the record for the richest race meet in the state of Wyoming's history, as well as the richest race in Wyoming's history. So those were two big deals for us. Uh, the other record, best I can tell is we had the largest horse population at a racetrack in Wyoming's history with 1,250 horses on grounds when we were full. That's a lot. But all in all, it was a great meet. We look forward to making it bigger and better next year. And, uh, I'll stand for any questions, but thank you all for the opportunity, and thank you to the commission for working with us.
Any questions for Mr. Greer?
President Cavelo.
Director Larimendi.
Mr. Greer, do you have an idea or a rough estimate of the total amount of purse money that you guys awarded?
I do have the specific numbers. Yeah, total purse money, including horseman contribution, $3,010,318. So we crossed over the $3 million mark this year in one meet. That's a big deal. Uh, the richest race, $245,800 in a single race.
Mr. President.
Go ahead.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Greer. The last thing that I just wanted to say is, uh, from the office's perspective, we want to thank you all for your willingness to, to work with us. You know, there's a lot of times that things come up during the race meet that may not be outlined in rule, but, you know, we ask Mr. Greer, and he's on it. Things get done. It's, it's super helpful and it's much appreciated from the office.
Fantastic.
Thank you, Nick.
President Ridgeway, did you have anything to add?
No, because Jack probably covered it. Actually, I do, I do want to read something that was on, uh, I thought, so they, we have the, uh, uh, the announcer at the track does work on our social media on Facebook, kind of posts stats about the meet or whatever. So there was this post right before the last weekend where he said, uh, 858,000 is the total amount of purse money to be distributed during the last three days of racing this season, bringing the total amount to a little less than $3 million. Those are records for the weekend and for the entire meet. The 858,000 for the last three days of the meet was almost as much as the 860,000 we did for the entire meet in 2021. That's a really cool statistic. The 2.95, sorry, 2.978 million of purse money for the season is $1 million more than the prior year. That's a basically, you know, 33, 36% increase. That's a lot. Uh, so I just thought that that's the, those couple of statistics were really cool. Plus, I'm sure Jack talked about just all the horses that we had at that meet. The, uh, money we spent to build the bridle path over to the additional stalls. So we had all those additional horses that are there. And just to pivot to Wyoming Downs for a little bit, I mean, that meet's been also absolutely incredible this year. We've had record handle, we've had record attendance. Opening day was, uh, basically a sellout. We actually ran into a lot of issues because we were sell, we had so many tickets with this new online ticketing system. Um, the crowd's been really, really busy. There's a ton of horses there, too, so, uh, this no overlapping thing really benefited both tracks significantly. Um, because there was more participation because you're not trucking eight hours across the state. Um, so that's also a pretty significant fact when you look at the impact. Um, so Jack did a great job, him and his team up there this year, and just that kind of gross, incredible. And when we get to run through the Downs stuff when that meet's closed, it's also very, very incredible what's been happening down there. I was thoroughly impressed, uh, going down there, um, first couple of weekends.
It's exciting for horse racing in Wyoming. Any other questions or comments? Representative Davis.
Thank you, Mr. President. Could you tell me your public attendance? Is it up, or are we doing better there, you know, from when we first started a few years back?
Yeah, President Cavelo, Commissioner Davis, yes, the attendance was up this year uh, from, from last year, and it's been steadily going up every year. We're definitely not getting the attendance as example maybe Wyoming Downs is getting, but, uh, we are up from last year, and we did have some weather that played a factor as well, but up anyway. Average, probably 300 a day.
Anything else from anyone?
Yes.
Thank you, President Cavelo. I just wanted to, um, also thank 307. They hosted our accredited Wyoming Bread Banquet there on the last day of the meet. Um, it was, um, it actually was a really great event. Um, we didn't have as many people coming, but a lot of them were going back and forth trying to haul the Wyoming Downs to get their stalls. But, um, it was a great event, and I just wanted to, on behalf of the commission, um, and the staff, to thank you guys for hosting that. And, um, it was a great event, and thank you.
Thank you, Brandy.
Well, gentlemen, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Moving on to item number eight.
President Cavelo, item number eight, online sports wagering request. I'll turn this over to, uh, Mr. Steinberg.
Thank you. President Cavelo, uh, item number eight A is a vendor, new vendor application. Um, CNN Sports Risk Limited. On April 30th, we received their application, uh, completed application for CNN Sports Risk Limited. They are a vendor out of the UK, actually. They have a, um, contract with Bet MGM. They are an analytics company that specifically deals with, uh, soccer data. Did a background investigation on them, as well as their CEO, Henry Newman. He has been issued a key personnel, uh, license with us. After their background investigation, uh, CNN Sports Risk Limited appears to meet all the statutory requirements to receive a online sports wagering vendor permit in Wyoming, and I would stand for any questions.
Are there any questions for Mr. Steinberg? So before us, we have a request for an online vendor's permit. Do I hear a motion?
Motion to approve the license.
A motion from Director, or from Commissioner Broussard to approve the license. Do I hear a second?
Second. President Cavelo, if I may. It would be a permit.
A permit.
A permit, not a license. Sorry.
A permit. That would be a, a, a motion to approve the permit from Commissioner Broussard. And a second came. Oh, okay. Commissioner Torgerson seconded the motion. Very good. It's now time for comments. Do we have any comments from the commission with regards to the motion? Any discussion? Hearing none? How about the public? Any discussion from the public with regards to the motion? Anything online? Any hands raised? Nothing? Very good. We'll proceed to vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. No one opposed? Motion passes. Moves on to eight B.
Thank you, President Broussard, or, sorry, Cavelo. Got so used to over the years saying Broussard. Apologize. Just a quick general update. I wanted to clear some things up. You guys saw in your packets that you've kind of had some, I would say, bad press or definitely some inaccurate press over the limiting discussions that we've had in the meeting. I want to say for the record, clear and concise, that Wyoming patrons are not, I repeat, not being limited in the state of Wyoming because they are cheating. They are not being limited for cheating. When I use that in the meeting, it was to use it as an example of one reason that operators gave us, for a reason that they use generally across the board to limit patrons, not for a reason that Wyoming patrons are being limited. There are many, many reasons that operators are limiting patrons. That is just one. So what I'm going to work on is a memo to you all and try to list out the different reasons because to go over them in a meeting and try to explain them all and how they work would just, quite frankly, take too long. So I'll work on a memo to give you to kind of break down the different reasons that they gave us for why they limited, limit patrons. But again, I just want to say that that is not why Wyoming patrons are being limited. The second part is, part of the information that was given to you was a little inaccurate. There are less than, significantly less than 1% of our patrons are being limited. That part is accurate. When we, when I initially looked at the data, the data that we received showed percentages of limiting. Some of those percentages showed 1%, 5%, 10%, 25% next to the limits. I assumed wrongly that that meant that that was the percent that they were being limited by. So in other words, if it said 1%, that that person was being limited by 1%. So they could bet up to 99% of whatever the limit for that particular wager was set at. Or if it was 5%, that they could bet up to 95%. When we had further discussions, the director and I, with one of the operators, we found out that that is opposite. So if the limit says 5%, they are limited to 5%. So they are actually limited by 95%. So it's actually flip-flopped. So when I gave the information to you that they're not being limited by much, it's actually reversed. The ones that are being limited are actually being limited fairly significantly. They're being limited by, 75% or better. Again, it's still a very, very small number of patrons that are being limited, but the ones that are being limited are being limited by quite a bit. So I want you to know that the director and I are going to continue to look at these numbers. We're going to continue to ask for these numbers periodically, to monitor them, to see if numbers are changing, if more patrons down the line are being limited, if those numbers are changing, if they're growing, if the reasons are changing. I don't know that one snapshot gives us true data to make any decisions, informed decisions, but we'll look again a couple more times to try to give you some better information. And I'll work on getting a memo out to you guys to give you some better information about the different types of limiting. Thank you. Commissioner Broussard has a question for you.
President Cavelo, Mike, just to help me get my head around this, you said there's a small percentage of Wyomingites that are limited. Is there a number on that? Like, I don't know how many Wyomingites sports wager. Is there 50, 100? I'm putting you on the spot, I know, but you don't know.
President Cavelo, Commissioner Broussard, I could, I could come up with a number for you. I couldn't give it to you today. I'd have to go back through all of the data that was sent to us. What I can tell you is it's less than 1% of the total number of people that are
sports wager.
Sports wagering. It's like a decimal percentage of 1%. So it's, it's less than a half of 1%. But as, as far as a physical number, I don't have that off the top of my head.
So we do have some people who are limited, but it could be five or 10 even?
It's more than five or 10. I would, I would say it's probably in the hundreds because there's a significant amount of people that are wagering. But it's, in the grand total, it's a, it's a small number of them.
Sure. The other question, if, if they're being limited by 95%, is, what are they being limited from? The amount they could wager? Are the, are the events they can wager on? What's the limit? Is it certain sports or just how much money they can actually wager? And are there limits to wagering on individual events? Is there like, like for a football game, you can only put $100? I'm, I'm kind of just vague on that. Help me out.
President Cavelo, Commissioner Broussard, so again, there are different types of limits. So some people are limited across the board. So some people that are limited, say, say a person is limited by 25%. That could be, or limited at 25%, so limited by 75%. If they're limited across the board, that means every wager that they make is limited by 75%. So each, each wager that's listed on a sports book, everybody has a limit, right? So anybody that's not limited has a limit. So each wager that they put out there, they have a limit that every normal person can bet. So it may be $10,000. So wager A, everybody that bets, the max is $10,000. Wager B, everybody that bets may have a max bet of $5,000. So some people are limited across the board. So that 75% limit applies to each one of those. So your 25% that you can is just taken off of whatever that individual limit is on each bet. Some people are limited to a specific event or specific type. So some people are limited specific to like prop bets. So they can, they can bet the full amount on every other type of wager, but are limited specific to prop bets. So it kind of depends on the type of limit that's placed on them.
Fair enough. I know it's a hard question.
It varies. Yeah.
Yes, Representative Davis.
Thank you, Mr. President. And then some of those limits are imposed by the, the wagers themselves, too. Is that correct? When you're doing your, know your wagering?
President Cavelo, Representative Davis, we don't, we didn't get those numbers. So self-imposed wager or limits are not limits that we received. The, that data that we got are the limits that were imposed by the operators. So that's the data that we have right now.
Follow up, Mr. President?
Go ahead with the follow.
You alluded to, oh, do you have an estimate of how many participants do sports wagering across Wyoming?
President Cavelo, Representative Davis, I, I can get it. I, I don't have those numbers with me, but it's significant.
Commissioner Schiffer.
I know we're kind of going back and forth on this, but Mr. Steinberg, the gentleman that came here in November said that the principal reason for limiting players' bets was that he was too successful. Is that a factor in the limit, you know, the limiting that these companies are doing, so far as you can tell? Thank you.
President Cavelo, Commissioner Schiffer, we did, the director and I did look at the data to see if that was apparent. It's, it's hard to tell, looking at, at one set of, of data. That's part of the reason we wanted to look at more data. I would say that maybe there, there was some, some reason to pause and, and question maybe a few of them. But then there's also some that, that we looked at that, that were the opposite, you know, where people were losing. And so we were kind of baffled as to why they were being limited because they were losing at the time that they were limited. So in our heads, just looking at the numbers, you know, just by strictly a numbers perspective, it didn't make sense why they were limited at that time, in conjunction to what Spanky told us in November. Because that didn't correlate, you know? There were some people that were up at the time they were limited, but there were also people that were down at the time they were limited. So there wasn't a direct correlation, I guess, to answer your question. There were some both ways.
Anyone else for any questions or comments?
President Cavelo, also, just so you're aware, since this whole conversation has come up, our office has only received one actual complaint from a patron. Each complaint that we do or will receive, if we receive them, Mr. Steinberg and I have taken that complaint, contacted the sports book that the complaint is against, met with them on that specific case, to work that case out with them, to figure out why that individual was limited. So we will take these also on a case-by-case basis to ensure that, you know, if people are complaining and then we do it on a case-by-case basis and we see things that are alarming, we'll make sure that you're aware of it.
Mr. Broussard.
If you can't answer this, it's fine. Can you tell why that person was limited?
That one was pretty complex. It has, I'll, I'll get it the way that it was presented. That way I don't mess it up. Because I don't want to mess it up here and then have it printed somewhere else later that something was said that wasn't said.
Anyone else with any comments, questions? Yes.
I mean, I guess.
Commissioner Schiffer.
Thank you, President Cavelo. You know, I think the issue we've got to decide is, is, is this something we need to deal with at some point? As we get more information, are we going to have to figure out either a way to protect those people or if we're, if we have new companies coming in, if we're going to create some kind of limitation or checks on this kind of behavior? And are we required to do so? That's, I mean, I think it's, this thing is, once we get the data, then we got to figure out where we should go with the data and who, you know, if somebody is not, if somebody that's supposed to be protected by us is not being protected, then do we need to take some action to deal with that? So I, I mean, I think it's, there's a big issue out here.
President Cavelo.
Yes.
Commissioner Schiffer, I agree completely, and I think as we continue to see this, if we start seeing things that, like Mr. Steinberg said, cause for pause, like this, this doesn't seem right, and this is just a way for an edge for the operator, I think that's something that needs to be considered in, in saying, you know, that's something that in rule could say, you know, operators can limit for, you know, obvious violations of terms of service, i.e. court citing or lines manipulations or whatever. But in this instance, in this instance, you're not going to limit in Wyoming. And if you're found to be limiting in Wyoming, that would be a violation. So we can start compiling all that as, as we continue on. I think this is going to unfortunately be kind of a lengthy process. I mean, the market in Wyoming, even though it's substantial, we have a lot of people that are doing sports wagering, but our market is much smaller than pretty much every other state.
Do you have adequate staff?
We do.
To do that?
Yeah, we do.
Interesting discussion. Anything else?
President Cavelo, and the last thing on this topic, I know it's in your packet, I included the article that was referenced, Mr. Steinberg referenced about the, and the reason that I included that, I included that and then I actually included the letter that was sent to him by Mr. Steinberg. If you read the article, there's several quotes that are made. And the letter that Mr. Steinberg sent him, that was the only correspondence with this individual. There was no phone call, no nothing. This was it. And you will see that none of those quotes are in that letter. So I just wanted to share that with you. And that is all I have for a break.
Very good. Thank you. Let's move on to item number nine, skill-based amusements and a new skill-based amusement game vendor application for license.
President Cavelo, item number nine A is a skill-based amusement game vendor's license. On June 23rd, my report says 2023, that should say 2025, I'm living in the past, we received a application from a Robert Wellenborg seeking licensure for, to become a skill-based amusement games vendor. The name of the company is JJVG of Wyoming LLC. We received the completed application, the $2,500 application fee, the fingerprints and background, background questionnaires for all three controlling partners in the company, and all of their required plans. JJVG of Wyoming plans to use the previously approved Vanilla Games and software that has already undergone lab testing and has been approved for use in the state of Wyoming. We submitted their fingerprint cards for all three individuals. We received the results of those on July 10th, and there was no disqualifiers found in the criminal histories. I reviewed all of their submitted plans and determined that they appear to be in compliance with the Gaming Commission Administrative Rules as far as Chapter 2, Section 3, Chapter 5, Chapter 6, Section 1, Chapter 4, Section 12, and Chapter 5, Section 4. At the completion of the review, staff had determined that JJVG of Wyoming, who seeks licensure as a skill-based amusement game vendor, plans to utilize previously approved Vanilla Games that have been approved in the state of Wyoming. All required information was received and appears compliant with Wyoming State statutes and Gaming Commission Administrative Rules. An independent lab has also concluded that the games and themes to be used, manufactured by Vanilla Games, appear compliant with Wyoming statute and Wyoming Gaming Commission Administrative Rules. This one is, this company actually has a nationwide contract with a very large corporation throughout the country. That's what they're seeking licensure for, is to, you know, be able to utilize skill games in the state of Wyoming in several locations that have liquor licenses that they have national contracts with. they have national contracts with. In your packet, you will see the entire application, the plans, background questionnaires, all the ins and outs. And I would stand for questions on this application if there are any.
Any questions with regarding this application? For Director Laramende. Commissioner Schiffer first.
Let's go with Mr. Sch, thank you, President Cavelo. I just would note a couple things here. Mr. Willenberg, I believe that's probably his name, but his name is spelled differently on page 106. I'm going to assume that's a typo by whoever filled out the form, but still, I think it's concerning that we get his name, you know, we understand that his name is correct. And I guess, once you run it through the.
Willenberg versus Willenberg.
The check, you'd find out what his name was. The second thing is, again, and I brought this up before at a previous application, this company seems to have no presence in Wyoming, period, other than to have incorporated a LLC. Should there be issues with them, we either have to go to Billings or Illinois to deal with them. I just think it's a very, you know, it's not a good way to protect the public that's patronizing these kind of companies. And I'm probably going to say it's a legislative problem, but I think there should be a presence in Wyoming and some assets in Wyoming for these companies to operate. Thank you.
And Commissioner?
Yeah, just to go.
Broussard.
Mr. President, Nick, what does this bring us to as far as vendor numbers?
President Cavelo, Commissioner Broussard, I was actually going to get to that in the next one, but I'll tell you right now. So we had 18, we had 18, we now have 13, this would make it 14. And then I'll go into detail on that in the next update.
Thank you.
Thank you. So I guess my question with regards to what Commissioner Schiffer brought up is, do any of these online wagering companies have real presence in the state of Wyoming?
President Cavelo, are we on the skill game side of it, you mean?
Oh, excuse me, skill game, excuse me.
So currently, you know, several of the vendors that we have are, you know, they're homegrown vendors, they're Wyoming residents. We have had out-of-state companies that have applied and been approved. In my next update, I think you'll find some of that interesting, quite honestly. Currently, there's nothing in statute or rule that mandates that you have to be a resident of Wyoming or have an office in Wyoming. We did have an out-of-state vendor a couple of years ago that had applied that actually ended up moving operations here. They realized that trying to run a company like this, you really need boots on the ground. And they ended up moving operations to Wyoming. So they actually have an office here in Casper now, and their folks, they've hired people in Casper. Some of the other ones, not so much, but currently there's nothing that requires that they have that footprint in Casper. I'm sorry, I said Casper, I meant Wyoming. I would prefer Casper because it makes it easier for us.
Maybe a little bit of a follow-up, not necessarily about being in Wyoming, but with regards to the skill games, how, what is the potential for more skill games? I've yet to find a bar that doesn't have them in there already. So what is the potential for?
President Broussard, so that's kind of a tough question to answer, just because the opportunity is out there. I mean, luckily, we've had very conscious vendors that are not going into places that really, you know, we've got, say, certain family restaurants that may have a liquor license. It's just not a good fit, so they're not even approaching those. But there's thousands of liquor licenses, so there's thousands of opportunities. However, as it stands today, we have, I'll tell you because I wrote it down, just in case, we have 365 locations that skill games are in and 1,303 active terminals across the state. So we did see, well, I'll wait till my next update, otherwise it's going to get out of
365 locations, but we have thousands of liquor licenses.
Thousands, yeah.
Still limited to four machines per location.
Well, Commissioner, what is your preference with regards to this application?
I move we approve.
A second. We have a motion on the floor and a second. Now it's time for discussion.
Can we have a breakdown on the percentage that another games has?
President Broussard, if you want to give me a minute, I can actually show you, I can show you real time where certain games are at, if you want to give me one second.
For this new venture to succeed, is it going to have to grow more locations or take locations? I'm just wondering, what percentage do we have?
So, as I said earlier, this, this company has a national contract with a very large corporation that has a presence in Wyoming that would get their locations across the state. So there, it's my understanding and talking with, these folks aren't really ones that are going to be trying to go too much local businesses. They have the national contract, so they're going to continue to provide this to that, to a larger corporation across the nation where skill games are legal. But if you would like to see the map, I can show you.
No, it's okay.
Okay.
Commissioner Schiffer.
Thank you, President Cavelo. Mr. Laramende, following up on what you just said, so the big corporation you're alluding to that has the contract with JJVG would be the operator if they install machines in there. So they would be accountable and would have a presence in Wyoming, is that?
President Cavelo, Commissioner Schiffer, that is correct. So the operators, they have, yeah, they're brick and mortar businesses in the state of Wyoming that we can visit and talk to and meet with and hopefully never have to serve papers to.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Discussion from the public? Any hands raised online? We have a motion and a second. No further discussion, we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor of the motion to approve the license, please signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you, let's move on. Item 9B, general updates.
President Cavelo, item number 9B, skill-based amusement game general updates. As I mentioned earlier, we had just completed the 25, 26 renewal. We have now 14 vendors. Five of these vendors chose not to renew this year. We had a company called Boone Games that was approved about a year and a half ago. They never operated in the state of Wyoming once. They ended up not renewing. We had one called HungFi Gaming. They were just approved maybe six months ago. They never operated, they failed to renew as well. We had another one called Steel Wheel Gaming. They were based out of New York. They had very minimal operations, they had three locations. They have chose not to renew, and their assets went to another vendor, another licensed vendor. They operated the same games. Another one that never renewed was Inomax, never operated, they did not renew. And then Funam Bullist, which was the most recent one to be approved, never operated and did not renew. So we've lost five of our vendors for not renewing. We completed 392 operator renewals during those renewal period. We licensed 13 new operators, which would be your bars, drug stops, those kind of things, smoke shops. We have seven new operators that are pending approval. On those ones, we're just waiting for criminal history backgrounds. And as I said earlier, we currently have 1,303 terminals in operation in 365 locations across the state. And I would stand for any questions regarding skill-based amusement games.
Any questions for Director Laramende? Seeing none, we'll move on to item 10A. For the president's report, I really don't have a lot other than to say that Vice President Rithjoll and myself, since our last meeting, did attend the select meeting that was held here in Casper. Very interesting. Moving forward, we'll continue to attend those. The next ones coming up, I believe, are August 8th and 9th in Cheyenne. 7th and 8th in Cheyenne. I'll be able to attend at least one day of those. Wow. Okay, we'll do our best to attend at least one day. 8th and 9th, okay? Other than that, I don't have anything. Vice President Rithjoll, like I said, is shipping cattle, I expect him to join this meeting at some time, but he didn't have anything to report to me, so we'll leave that part alone and move on to the director's report.
President Cavelo, I have actually several things written down here. So just a quick legislative update, as President Cavelo said, on June 9th, the Select Committee held their first meeting here in Casper. They covered legislative history, revenues, Wyoming responsible gaming, historic horse racing, and the financial security. I had emailed all of you the minutes of that meeting. It's also available on LSO's website. The next meeting for the Select Committee on Gaming is scheduled for August 7th and 8th in Evanston. They moved that one to Evanston because they're hoping that they can get committee members to then go to the track on the 9th. That is final weekend for Wyoming Downs Racing. TRW will be meeting on August 19th here in Casper. I've been asked to come and speak to them. They are looking at some possible legislative action, seeking gambling proceeds for outdoor rec. And Capital Finance is meeting September 9th and 10th in Cheyenne. I've also been asked to attend the Capital Finance. They're looking at, I think there's four different bill drafts in regards to tax rates across the board, HHR, skill games, online sports wagering. And then also with that one, the Select Committee on Gaming is scheduled to meet on September 11th in Cheyenne. So that'll be the, basically the 9th, 10th, and 11th of September. That's all I have for the legislative portion. And I also wanted to make sure that all of the commissioners were aware of some upcoming available trainings to you all. The G2E Global Gaming Expo is held in Las Vegas every year. This year, it's October 6th through the 9th. They offer a ton of different educational tracks. Some of the ones that I had looked at that may be of importance or maybe interest to you all include regulation, there's one on responsible gaming, or actually, there's several different ones on responsible gaming, several ones on sports betting, and also the future of gaming. And also, the 2025 Global Symposium on Racing will be held December 8th through the 10th in Tucson, Arizona. This is another huge conference specific really to racing. It's, I went last year and it was incredible. This one's three days, there's dozens of panel sessions, there's a lot of dynamic discussions, and you can really learn some valuable insights. If any commissioner is interested in attending any of these, let me know and we can work out the logistics of how that works and how it looks to get you all there. So if there's not any questions on trainings, I will move on to the next one. Just some kind of general updates for the office. On June 9th, I presented to the Laramie City Council. I just gave them kind of a history of our agency, background information on HHR, skill-based amusement games, explained to them the history of revenues to Laramie and Albany County. Really, it was just an educational piece to get them to, they had asked, you know, what is HHR? A lot of, a lot of communities now are really becoming engaged and asking, you know, what is it that you guys do? What do we do? It's, it's been pretty, pretty nice to be able to present to some of these folks and really have engagement with cities and counties to where they have a grasp, somewhat of a grasp of what we do. As Brandy said earlier, with 307, on June 21st, 307 hosted the annual awards banquet. That was great. I did not leave hungry, thank you very much. On June 28th, I was able to have Mr. Kaler and Ms. Sewell with me in Wyoming Downs. So our attorneys were able to meet with the stewards and visit the track and see the backside. That's really helpful for them as well when they start, you know, helping us, they have an understanding and a layout of what things look like. And then the 29th through July 3rd, I attended the National Sports Safety and Security Conference. I took part in a panel discussion there with representatives from NASCAR, the NCAA, the United States Olympic and Paralympic Committee regarding athlete harassment. The whole purpose of this was to discuss the rules that you all moved forward for athlete harassment and involuntary, involuntary, that being, involuntary exclusions for individuals that are found to be in violation of, you know, problem behavior. That was a great, it was a great conference, very well received. And, you know, I will say that Wyoming is really being looked at for their work in this. It's been talked about nationwide, and the approach that you all took has kind of stood out as probably trend-setting approach. Lastly, for the general stuff, I just want to thank, you know, all of the office folks. They've been great since I've taken this position in November. Have a little bit of growing pains, not much has changed, some has changed, but everybody's been, you know, right on board, willing to help, and I appreciate that very much. So that's all I have for that one. And if there's no questions on any of that, I'll move to my, I believe, my last one. Okay. President Cavelo, this one is a little bit, I don't know, maybe, maybe a little unorthodoxed on, on this discussion. I just want to bring up some more works discussion. I know we had talked about it before, about the works and the stance that the stewards had taken. And I'm hoping that maybe after I kind of present some of this history and fill you all in, that you all can give me some direction or your thoughts, and then if you wouldn't mind opening up for any public for their thoughts, or I'm open to anything. So several months ago, we had talked about works and why they're so important. So works at a racetrack are, you know, they ensure that these horses are conditioned, that they're healthy, and that they're ready to compete and compete safely, which is a huge part of this. When a horse does a work, the information from that work is entered into a database that is then used by the wagering public to make wagering decisions. It has distances, it has dates, it has times. They come up with what's called the speed index based on the distance run and the time. And it's super important that that information is accurate because the wagering public relies on that to make decisions. Even if the argument is that they don't look at it to make their decisions, in my mind, that does not matter. If a person wants to wager on a bay horse because they like bays, that's their prerogative, but the data has to be accurate. So in 2024, the stewards had found works that were entered on entries that were false. They would enter a horse, the work didn't have, or the horse didn't have the required works. All of a sudden, out of nowhere, they would check the system again, and there it is, and it ran this day. And when they found that, they took issue, rightfully so, and they suspended taking works from those locations. That continued, I think that started early on in. That continued, I think that started early on in, in the race meet last year, maybe midway through, actually. So prior to the start of this race season, I reached out to our presiding steward and we talked about, is that practice going to continue? Or have things changed in those jurisdictions to where we can accept that to make sure that it's legit for, for everybody involved? And originally, no changes had been made. So the decision really was just, we're not going to risk it. We're not going to do it. Brandy worked very, very hard with neighboring jurisdictions to develop some criteria that would afford the horsemen in these neighboring jurisdictions to meet the work requirements that, that satisfy the commission and the stewards much, much closer to home. We did that. It worked pretty good for about a month, from March 19th through May 15th, actually. So I guess two months, where the stewards again discovered some questionable works being entered. Same thing, it's, horse didn't have it, then all of a sudden it does have it. So at that time, the stewards made the decision that we're not going to do it. We just can't. It's too hard for them to try to go through every entry and then back to wherever this horse may have worked and try to verify that this was accurate. They don't have the time to do it. Our staff doesn't have the time to do it. So that was the decision that the, the stewards made. To this day, I still continue to receive a lot of calls expressing frustration with this decision from neighboring, or horsemen in neighboring jurisdictions. I've explained multiple times about the, you know, the protection of the public and the wagering public. As you heard just a little bit ago, Wyoming Downs is doing record, record handle. It's even more important now than it was last year. We have record, people on the stands, record handle. And I, and I believe that this is extremely important. So we, during the course of all of this, you know, we've identified individuals that have taken part in these activities. Unfortunately for us, these activities are taking part outside of the boundaries of Wyoming. We have no control over what happens in other states or how it's handled in other states. So until that gets addressed from other jurisdictions, I feel that it kind of has to remain status quo with the decisions that we've made. You know, publicly, I want to make sure that everybody understands that I'm equally as frustrated. Like, I, I think it's, it's less than desirable that everybody, every horseman is being punished for the actions of a few, but I don't know any other way around it to ensure that the public is safe and the wagering is safe and these horses are safe. I have made it apparent that I'm committed to continue working with these neighboring jurisdictions. As a matter of fact, after the 7th and 8th meeting and the 9th meeting, on the 10th, we have another meeting with one of these jurisdictions in Evanston so we can start preparing for next season. So we can get on the same page and, you know, going into it, the horsemen have plenty of notice and they can do what they need to do. And we can ensure that our program and the integrity of our program remains tipped up. So with that, I would, any, any advice or any direction from you all that you would like to see or the public, I'm open to anything at all. Thanks.
Okay, the floor is open. Anything from the commissioners or anything from the public? Hand raised? Go ahead, Representative Davis.
Mr. President, is it possible that the comments I've been receiving back is that the permittees could, could possibly satisfy some of this by being available or having their facilities available earlier in the meets to do that type of work there? Is that something that we can negotiate with the permittees? Or how would that, is there any talk of something like that? Just a question.
President Cavelo, Representative Davis, that is a great point, and that is a conversation that I will be having with operators.
Yes, Commissioner Torgerson.
Yes, Mr. President and Director Laramende, I agree that the information that, that's put out there for these works has to be correct. I think if we can get some input from the horsemen themselves, I mean, it's in their best interest that only, you know, valid and real works are, are put out there. You know, the ones that are putting any false information on there or not timely information are, are only hurting everyone else. So, you know, I, I 100% back the stewards that are not accepting some of those works. But I think we need to find a way to validate that stuff. And then anything that we can prove is, you know, is false or misleading, there needs to be some kind of a, a binding punishment put on for those because you're not only endangering the horses, but you are also defrauding the public. And I think that there's, you know, there needs some, needs to be some serious repercussions for that type of thing. So I, I think that input from the horsemen, because it really is in their best interest long-term that, that everyone's putting valid information out there.
Thank you, Commissioner Torgerson. Mr. Greer.
President Cavelo, this is Jack Greer with 307. First of all, in complete agreement, we need to continue to do what's in the best interest of the horse racing industry at large, but specifically for the safety of these horses and also to protect the wagering public. But the works from an operator's perspective are truly about the safety of these horses and these joggies. These horses have to be ready to race. If that information's not accurate, it's, it's putting everybody in jeopardy, including every other rider in that race, every other horse in that race, people working the gates, so on and so forth. To Representative Davis's comment, I just wanted to make it known that we did open one month early for training in Gillette to help accommodate this issue. And we did have several people travel from Utah up to Gillette to get works. They'd come up workhorses and then travel right back. So it's somewhat inconvenient. I mean, we're not right across the road for some of these folks, but when is that, that is the only option, that is the only option as well. So we did have people take advantage of that. I do want that to be clear. We did have stalls available for horses hauling in to get works from out of state. So I'll stand for questions.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Greer? Anything else from, yes, Commissioner Sheffer?
Thank you, President Cavelo. I got a couple of points here. One, and I'm not using California as the greatest example in the world because they're all going to be gone, but I believe they, when you have a horse that's, you're intending to run in California, you have to notify the horse racing board, which would be similar to our board here, commission here, that, that you intend, and so that they, so that the commission can watch that horse all the way up if they want to inspect the horse or see what, you know, the works are recorded. That would be one idea to, you know, have the horsemen say, I'm coming to Wyoming, you know, here's the horse. If you want to look at the horse, if you want to do whatever you want to do, draw blood, take hair, whatever it is. That's one, one way you can really kind of track these animals that are coming into the state. The second thing is, if I'm not mistaken, these works are published by either the Racing Forum or Equibase or one of these companies. And to me, they're, they should be accountable for what they're publishing. I don't know if, if we require those companies to be licensed in Wyoming or not, or if we should move to do that. But, you know, there should be some accountability at that end because actually, they're the ones that are making the representation to the public. I disagree with Mr. Torgerson. I beat very few horsemen that really want to tell you everything because that might affect their odds when they're running that horse. So I have a little different view on, on their exemplary character. But regardless of that, I mean, the actual, the actual number that's put in the forum or the program is from a big, you know, jockey club or one of those companies. And I think we should look at, you know, having them be accountable for, for what they're publishing. Thank you.
Anyone else?
President Cavelo, if I may just follow up with that, those conversations are in the works as well. To your second point, we've been having those conversations. We're going to continue with those conversations. On your first point, though, do you have an estimate of the time, how much time out they had to notify?
I don't, the only reason I know anything about this is I know trainer Doug O'Neil was fined for a horse that broke his shoulder, that he did not notify the track or the, or the horse racing board that the horse had come to the grounds. So I really don't know a lot about it. I just kind of saw that in passing that he was disciplined for, for a violation of not letting them know that this horse was present, present.
President, thank you. Cavelo.
Jeez. What's that? Oh, yes, Commissioner Torgerson. Floor is yours.
Yes, Mr. President, I just, I guess one question or the, when these times for these works get posted, is there any way that we could say that they have to be posted within, you know, 24 hours when the actual work is performed so that they don't show up, you know, a, a week after or something that, that that work was supposed to have been actually done, you know, so that the, the work and the time that it's posted have to be within 24 hours of each other or something like that, that, you know, something along those lines that, that may help keep these, you know, late works from showing up?
President Cavelo, Commissioner Torgerson. So the problem with that is when it gets entered into the system, when you look at the printouts, it doesn't say the date and time of entry. And the works requirement is, how far out? 30 or 45? So it's 45 days, they have to have a work within 45 days. It could have happened anytime during that 45 days or inputted anytime in that 45 days. We wouldn't ever know if it was done within 24 hours unless we tried to get the vendor to print reports for every entry. And that goes, I don't think the, the stewards or the staff, the entry clerks would have the time to go through to verify that it was done within 24 hours.
Yes, go ahead.
President Cavelo, okay. So when, when we're talking about workouts, what, what happens is the, the racetracks, a track rule, each operator sets their own, right now, we don't have workout rules in our rules, which is something that we probably need to talk as a commission with. But as it stands now, each track writes their own set of workout rules. Some are within 45 days. If you're a non-starter, you have to have two within 60. You have to be approved by the starter. So there's a lot of things that happen at these tracks. What they've done now is, is that, in order, you have to be eligible when you, at time of entry. So if, what they're trying to do now is, we're not going to let them, when you enter, it prints on the entry card and it shows what works these horses have. And they, and the, the race office is in charge of going through those works and making sure they have the works that are credible for, to, to actually let them enter in that race. When that happens, now, now what we're doing is, you can't input, they have to be eligible at time of entry when those cards print. If they're missing a work, then they don't get put in the entry box. They get pulled out. So that's one way that we are addressing that problem. So we're not getting a bunch of ineligible works that get put in after the fact. That's what happened last year. It got in after the fact. All of a sudden, these works showed up after entries and they wanted to run, which were falsified works. So now they're making sure that these works are input before they enter. So there's no call, going and calling back and somebody accidentally putting them in. The problem lies with once, you know, we worked with Utah, which is a non-paramutual state, so they, you know, we're worried about our public, we're worried about fraud. Utah does not have to worry about that. They're not paramutual, right? So they have no workout rules. They have none of this. So we're, we've been working with them. They didn't have licensed clockers. They don't have licensed starters to, to do all of that. So that's what we had been working with them to set up these certain dates when these horses come, come work. Utah went ahead and licensed some clockers. They had the representatives there that could sign off and we were accepting those. After those days races, all of a sudden, you know, we get 15 new horses come after the fact that were inputs on days that weren't approved. But it's a logistical nightmare for us to, as Wyoming, to go through all of these states and say, this date's acceptable, this date's not acceptable. It, it gets us in a bind and it even got us in a bind the first weekend at Wyoming Downs because schooling races are, are acceptable, but they were put in on Equibase as, on a day that wasn't approved, but it was a schooling race. So there's a lot of variables that we can work with. But, but right now, I just want you guys to be aware that at time of entry, the stewards are making sure that no works can get put in after the fact to let them run. So they have to have everything done prior. But we are getting works from other states that are world record times, you know? And they're 13, they'll say like 13 out of 26 because, you know, they, they list them. If you have 36 horses run, they'll have the fastest time. And then if you're the 36 fastest time, you'll be 36 out of 36. Well, we had one show up at, at Energy Downs from Idaho that was, the horse was 13th out of 36 that day. World record time. And then he comes here and he runs last by many. So if, if you're looking at his time and you're a bet, you're the betting public and you see this horse and you're like, oh my gosh, look at how fast he worked. He was 13th, he, he was faster than these other, you know, these other horses. So they're putting their faith in this. That's what these first-time starters, the only thing you have to go on is their breed line and their workouts as far as making decisions on betting. Or like, you know, Director Laramende said, maybe you like bays, maybe you like the jockey, maybe you like the color. So, but, but to make a, you know, a guess on that, that's why, why these workouts are so important. So I think we have a lot of things as a commission we need to, you know, we are going to be reviewing our Chapter 8 rules on conduct of races. Maybe it's time to start putting some workout rules in there. It's across the board, so every track knows exactly, and every horseman knows what tracks in Wyoming ask for. Energy Downs could be different than 307. I mean, 307, Energy Downs could be different than Wyoming Downs, and then Wyoming Downs operators could do something different at Sweetwater. So, you know, let's keep it consistent. So I think there's just a lot, a lot more than just this issue. But like Nick said, we are talking with Utah at Wyoming Downs on the last weekend. They, they've actually requested it. They want to help. But honestly, in their rules, they just don't have anything to address workouts. We have had conversations with Equibase. They actually have not been very accommodating with taking responsibility for the people that they hired to input their results, to be honest. So, yeah, I stand for any questions.
Representative Davis.
Thank you, Mr. President. Jack, could you expand a little bit on your, you know, you said you offered it 30 days earlier? There's got to be a tremendous amount of expense to that, you know, being the first track in the season, weather conditions, getting the track ready and everything that is, that you're putting forth. And how many days can they do their trials and stuff like, or their works?
President Cavelo, Representative Davis, it is
President Cavelo, Representative Davis, it is expensive. But it's a cost that we incur because it's for the safety of the meat. We want to, being the first meat of the year, it's important for us to understand and guarantee the best that we can that these horses are fit and ready to run. The easiest way for us to do that is, A, having sound workout rules that require these horses to work at Energy Downs, right? So we're, we're having these horses come to Gillette, they have to, especially first time starters, they have to work in front of our starter. But there is a cost associated with that. We do charge $5 a day for a training stall to help recoup some of that cost, which is hopefully an advantage to these horsemen. They're, they're paying stall rent wherever they're probably at anyway, they can come to Gillette and get training in while, while they're there. We do that six days a week. We do dark day Monday. So, yeah, six days a week, a month ahead of the meet. It does cost, but it's worth it for us to, to help guarantee that these horses are ready
Anyone else? Obviously, important discussions, we'll continue to work forward. Obviously, discussions with stewards and jurisdictions close by that, that obviously bring horses to race. So, that being said, before we move on to number 11, we're going to have a short break. It is now 11:02. We'll reconvene at 11:15, or 10:15, excuse me, 10:15. That'd be quite a break, wouldn't it?
Let's have a good break.
See?
All right, we are back. Do we need to call the roll? I see we have Commissioner Wildcat.
President Cavelo.
Here.
Commissioner Torgerson.
Here.
Commissioner Bull.
President.
Commissioner Schiffer.
Commissioner Bressard.
Here.
Vice President Rithaler is still absent. Commissioner Curra. Chief Francisco is absent and Commissioner Wildcat.
Here.
Senator Kolb is absent, Representative Davis. And Governor's Liaison, Mr. Lubnow, is absent. President Cavelo, you still have a quorum.
Fantastic. Let's go right on into item number 11, historic horse racing request.
President Cavelo, item number 11A is a historic horse racing request. This is a new game type. I will turn it over to Exacta first. They have a presentation that we will show and then we'll go from there. But I'll kick it off with them first as soon as I get my screen up for everybody to see.
I'll go ahead and start while he's getting that up. Well, thank you, President Cavelo, Commissioners and Executive Director, Laramendi. My name is Jeff Lind. I'm the President of Exacta Systems, one of the founders of Exacta Systems. I'm here with Bill Baldwin. He is our Senior Director of Engineering. And Steve May from GLI, and they're here to support me, to answer questions that may be more technical or regulatory oriented beyond what I may be able to answer. I'm hoping that my boots and my Texas drawl translate better here than they do in the Northeast. Up there, they look at me like I'm a strange person, so hopefully that works here. We've been a provider here to Wyoming for almost 10 years. And we are an innovator that really has established what is the basis for HHR math modeling, accounting, and just paramutual wagering in the industry. Our foundational mission was to strengthen horse racing through innovative technologies. And so when Jack Greer was talking about all of 307's records, that made me very proud. I mean, that is what we started the company for, is to help a struggling industry. So it's my privilege now to tell you about our latest innovation. We developed this with leading table games provider, InnerBlock. And we have worked together with operators, players, GLI, and also various commissions to try to get this product right, including Mr. Laramendi and Mr. Kaler has been involved in some of the conversations. So all of our operators here and in virtually every jurisdiction we're in have expressed interest in this product and are very interested in it. I want to say we're particularly grateful for the support we've gotten from Wyoming Horse Racing in this state supporting us. So thank you, guys. I think we can, I want to ask one quick question. Should, do I need to read the slides or can I just speak to them?
Speak to them.
Okay, thank you. I think, Nick, we can go to the next slide, which I have since the presentation is behind me. I've got them up on my screen as well if you're wondering why I keep looking at my screen. The first thing I want to make clear is we have based this in all of the core HHR concepts that have been long established in the historical racing industry. It's a multiplayer event, a multi-race event, I'm sorry. Everything is paramutual. The way that the wagers are divided between a takeout for the operator and a paramutual prize pool for the players is consistent with what's been done in the past. The wagers are placed and displayed using horse racing outcomes and then using familiar gaming-style displays to make things fun for players. And the payouts are solely based on the horse finish order. That is all true of this new product. The innovation in this product is we've created a new way to apply horse races to model the roulette game, which required, we went through many iterations of this, but what we ended up on is what we call a selector race and four additional prize determining races, all of which are handicapped by the player and which should be handicapped by the player, whether they, most of them, well, I don't know about most. They will choose to do it manually or they can use the recommended finishes. So that is the biggest difference here. Handicapping interface is displayed before every event, so players know that they are, in fact, playing horses. They're not just playing a table game. It is definitely different in that way than the original table game. Thank you. So a big part of what makes this unique is it has a physical roulette wheel. A lot of what InnerBlock does is make very interesting hardware. It's an electronic wheel that has a unique controllability that we can make the, well, InnerBlock can make the ball go in the number that they want. So the horses determine exactly which ball number should win. And it'll be, say, 14, and InnerBlock will spin a mechanical wheel and it will end up in 14 using some magic that they have. So to that end, you can play the game completely without the wheel. You can do it with just our horse race betting, but the wheel makes it more fun. Three main components. You've got the Exacta system doing the horse racing and all of the paramutual counting. You've got the player terminal, which is just like on all of our other products, is the gaming interface for the player. And then the new introduction is this unique mechanical wheel. I think we can move to the next one. Really, the emphasis here is just to reiterate, the paramutual counting is the same. It is not different than what we've done before. And that includes breakage. It includes takeout. I've spoken to most of the points on this one already. Our system provides all of the HHR services that are needed to be compliant. I think we can move on to the next one, Nick. The wagering is slightly different. You can do it one of two ways. You can do it through the horse racing interface or you can wager through the table game interface. And either one will get you the same result. One is familiar to players that like table games and one is familiar to players that want to play the horses more. The selector race is slightly unique in that there are five races in the race set. The first one is used to determine which of the other four determines the actual ball pocket. Each horse is assigned a number of the four races to the pockets, what's called the pockets on the roulette wheel. So the selector race is the first of the five races, four additional races. The first race you handicap to determine which of the four additional races matters. And then the winning horse will correspond to the winning pocket there. The Exacta interface on the next slide is like our traditional interface. It includes handicapping information. It lets you drag the horses that you think are going to win into the leading position and you can cycle through all of the races and set them. A player may choose to handicap just the selector race and the one he thinks is going to win or may choose to hedge against all the races, which corresponds and may choose to handicap all of them. And by doing that, the table game equivalent would be that you put a number on black and another number on the line, maybe between 14 and 16 or whatever numbers are adjacent on a roulette table. I think we can go on to the next one. The InnerBlock interface and the Exacta interface talk to each other. So anything that you do in the Exacta interface, which is on the left side of the screen, will be mirrored on the back table game interface. And then you can collapse the Exacta interface and you can make the same actions on the table game behind it. Both are wagering tools. They are just tools for players to make decisions on wagers and place their wagers. The next slide before we, I think you can switch to it, is a video. And I'm going to talk through it before we play it because it's really short and really fast. And unless Nick is pausing very carefully, you're not going to get much out of it, which you're about to see, and then we can cycle it back. But you're going to see a wager placed through the horse racing interface. Then you're going to see that collapsed. You're going to see the handicapping and a wager placed through the horse racing interface. You're going to see that collapsed and then you're going to see additional wagers placed on the table game interface. Then you're going to see the spin button push. And we don't have the wheel in the video, but effectively the wheel would be spinning and you would see the actual pocket that the ball ends up in while the horses are also running. So you're going to see the horses run across the screen. And then the results are revealed and you win your prizes accordingly. And then finally, at the end of that, you will see the, in the video, the player has the ability, just like all of our products, to go back and look at the race results in detail if they want to and see what the actual race was. So with that being said, Nick, I think we could play this video. Hopefully it translates well. There, you're seeing the handicapping followed by selecting a wager in the HHR Exacta interface. Uh-oh, we didn't play the whole video. So that's selecting the wager there. You can see collapsed HHR interface. Now you're going to see additional wagers drop there. You see the horses run. You can imagine the wheel is spinning there and we end up with the ball that won. And then you see on the left side, the player is going back and looking at the actual race details. And that is how it works. I know there's potentially a lot of questions in there. So the final slide we'll look at, and then we'll talk about questions, is the roulette displays. These are what the gaming terminals at InnerBlock makes look like. They have a single-player version and they have a multiplayer version. The multiplayer version is a particularly unique experience because it has a shared wheel that multiple players can play at the same time. They are playing the same races. The result will be the same. That's correct, right? I don't want to misstate that. But the result is the same as they're playing the same races. And, but their different handicapping will provide them different results on their screen. The handicapping is really trying to predict, as it is with real horse racing, which ball pocket is going to get the result. That would be the number 14 or whatever number we end up with. But that's the new product you get to see in this state that doesn't exist. This has been, together, a multi-year development effort with us and with InnerBlock. It's been a very hard technical challenge. We've worked with all the regulators. We've actually had several solutions that were kicked out by various regulators over the years, where they said, no, that's not going to fly. A lot of it's been, we've thrown it to GLI for testing. They say, no, this doesn't comply for this reason. After two years, we've found a compliance solution that I believe, Nick and his team believe is compliant. I think I can say confidently that GLI and their team have written an approval letter for us at this point. And we're hoping that you'll give it your consideration and can give us the ability to get this out in this market. We're very proud of it. I think if you want to move to the final slide, it's basically just a questions slide. So please, with that, I guess, that's the end of my question.
All right, Commissioner, we're open for questions.
Mr. President.
Commissioners.
Have you, has this game been set up in any other locations and played yet? Or is this brand-new to the whole?
This is brand-new to the HHR industry.
Okay, thank you.
Questions, Commissioners? Commissioner Torgerson.
Yes, Mr. President. I guess my question would just be that, you say the odds on this are based off of multiple races at the same time?
Yes, sir. All of our historical horse racing games are based off of multiple races. We have used a three-race model for most of the existing product that's on the Exacta system. Some of our competitors use 10 races. There's various multi-race models in use right now. For us, this is a change to move it to a five-race model. We haven't used that on the Exacta system before, but it is ultimately still a multi-race system. And we call that combination a race event where it's multiple races together.
So.
Questions?
Go ahead. I guess, sorry, Mr. President, just to follow up.
You're fine.
On your presentation there, you were saying that they can go, the players could set their own handicaps? Or is there also a simpler way to play it where they just kind of, is there a default that it goes to if they want to kind of speed-play it or?
Yes, sir. There is a recommended order that the player is given to make their wagers. And they can accept that order and not have to go through the full manual handicapping process, which is consistent with how the games that are in the market today are played.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments, Commissioners? Well, if nobody else has one, go ahead, Commissioner Wildcat.
Hi, thank you, President. Mr. President. Is there, when you first come up on the game, the InnerBlock cabinet, whether it be the single or the four-pack, is there something on there that basically shows the horse race or something? How even some of the old bingo games, they might have the bingo card on the top? Or do you have to click over and scroll over the menu to populate that to show it on the screen? So I just wanted to know if it's easily visible as a HHR machine versus looking like a Class III Las Vegas-style electronic roulette?
Thank you for the question. In fact, that was a concern raised by Nick Laramendi. We do have on this product, the races, the historical race interface is up at the beginning of the game session when a player puts money in. It can be collapsed by the player, but we wanted to make sure that there was visibility of the racing aspect of this, that it was not just a roulette game when the player approaches the terminal.
Thank you.
I guess my turn for a comment. So first of all, I'm going to commend you guys on being extremely innovative in what you've come up with. Obviously, you spend a lot of time and energy. That being said, I'm going to go right now on record as opposing, approving this for the state of Wyoming for a couple of different reasons. First of all, I think it goes farther away from where the original HHR and the machines that were originally approved, approved, go more along the lines of what we considered the look of the slot machine. Certainly, you can say that the backend works the same, but I think that there would be strong pushback from legislators that approve this if we were to go along this line. And secondly, the fact that we're bringing along something that more appears to be a table game, I feel like we're stepping into the realm that belongs to the Northern Arapaho and the Shoshone. I just think that we're stepping out of bounds of where we should be, and I'm opposed to this.
May I speak to that?
Absolutely.
This game, the multiplayer terminal certainly looks a lot more like a table game. The single-player terminal is not very different from what is in the field right now. We have lots of games with mechanical wheels on the top. So I do recognize it is something new. It is intended to be something new and fill a player interest that doesn't exist. It is, we've had in the past Keno-style games on our system that I believe were running in the state. I don't know that they're running anymore. But a variety of games that were not slot-style games have existed, not a large variety, but a few. And so to that end, we're trying to be creative here and provide something new, certainly. I appreciate your perspective, too.
President Cavelo.
Mr. Laramendi.
If I may, just to clarify, historically, the Keno-style games and anything that's mimicked like video poker or anything like that has actually been denied by this commission. They never operated in the state, in this state, at least. I think there was some confusion, concerns, especially with the Keno, because Keno is available in the state of Wyoming and it's regulated by the Lottery Board, not this office. So there was concern that the consumer would be confused as to, is it Keno? Is it not Keno? What is it exactly? So I think that was the determination on that one. And I know that there was some poker-style ones that I was able to find that were not approved.
Commissioners, anyone else with any comments, discussion, thoughts? Guess it's time to open it up to the general public. Did you have something, Commissioner Schiffer? General public, go ahead. Okay.
President Cavelo, Steve May from GLI. I'm also here, I'm not here to advocate for or against this product. GLI is just the independent testing lab that has tested this. I'm actually not being paid by Exacta even to be here today. But if you do have any of the more technical questions that I could answer, I'm happy to address those. We have, we've tested both the Exacta TOESS system on this and the InnerBlock player interface on this system. And if you have any, even the historical-type questions about this, you know, GLI has reviewed this system up and down. We don't actually, we answer regulatory questions for the supplier and the regulator at the same time on this. We don't really help design any of the system on this, but we have worked closely with them in answering regulatory-type questions and quite frankly, at least pointing out regulatory concerns that we have had throughout the system development. And again, we're here to kind of speak to our letter, speak to our testing on this system and speak to what we have seen in this. And that's really based on, you know, almost 10 years of HHR experience that I've had in reviewing various systems on this. So I'm happy to answer any kind of questions that you have as well. If you have any, you know, technical questions on that, so I'm happy to address anything you have on that.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Bull.
Oh, thank you, Mr. President. Is it Mr. Lamb? Do I have your name correct?
Sir, if you're speaking to me, it's Lind, L-I-N-D.
Okay, yes, Mr. Lind. Welcome to Wyoming.
Thank you.
My question is, is it possible to play the game as one would play a roulette wheel? I mean, if we have somebody in that comes in that wants to play roulette, are they able to manipulate this machine in a way to do that? to manipulate this machine in a way to do that?
Well, it is certainly a simulation of a roulette game. You are able to place wagers consistent with how you would place them on a roulette, on a roulette table. The horses are involved, they determine the outcome, and there is handicapping, and all of that is consistent with all of our other products in this market. So it is not, you cannot just walk up to the game and play roulette without knowing you're playing a horse racing game. You can minimize the impact of the horse racing interface.
Yeah. And see, that does raise a concern, because, you know, we're not supposed to be promoting, at least this commission is not supposed to be promoting table gambling in this state. We're supposed to be promoting horse racing. And so I do have a concern about approving a game which could effectively be played as if you wanted to play roulette, if you had gone up to the casinos in Riverton and so forth. So that's my concern. Thank you for your answer.
Mr. President?
One thing I would add on that in, in viewing the system, as GLI has tested it, you know, a roulette table is truly a game of chance. There is no, there's no impact a player can have on the outcome determination on that. With this system and the testing that GLI has done, there is, the handicapping plays a, it could potentially play a much more significant role in this. If the player handicaps all, all four of the races, even if they don't use a selector race on this, the player could see that there's more, they have handicapped this and put those in their predicted order, and they may see that there's more red horses towards the top, or there's more even number versus odd number, or there's more of the first-third horses at the top. So even if they don't correctly choose the horse that corresponds to the winning number, because of their handicapping, they actually do have a lot more of an impact on that. So there is a fundamental difference in this versus a traditional roulette table, which is purely a game of, of chance on that. So the handicapping does play a more significant role in this. So that, that would be one very big difference in a traditional, a traditional roulette table versus this. You know, the, with that, again, there's no, there's absolutely no player impact on that versus this. I mean, this is really, the roulette wheel is, is just entertaining display similar to the way the triple-race method games that they've, that Exacta's had all along are, the slot look on those has no impact on the outcome of that, and this is, is very much the same one. That has absolutely no impact on that.
Thank you.
Mr. President, can I get a question on that comment?
Absolutely. Commissioner?
Thank you. So you mentioned handicapping a few times. Is it possible to go up to the machine, not do any handicapping, just throw your coin in and play the game? Or is handicapping essential with every single play?
Every play is handicapped on every game on our system, and that's true of this one, too. The player can accept the recommended handicapping order, in which place there is no actual moving of horses around in the handicapping order. You are accepting what's, what's already there. But it's the same as all our other games in this state.
Follow-up, please?
Go ahead.
So it is possible to just go up, put the coin in, and that accepts the handicap as presented by, recommended by the machine or the, the math model itself, and then just play just based on that?
In the case of roulette for this state, they also have the extra step of needing to minimize the, the horse racing handicapping display in order to do that. So it is not, they have to acknowledge that they're not going to change the handicapping.
Thank you.
Commissioner Rithaler has been trying to call in. Have we had any luck getting him in? Very good. Just, I wanted to let you know what we were doing here. We do have a commissioner that's trying to join us. Representative Davis.
Thank you, Mr. President. As being a former member of this commission, this is one thing that we always did struggle, as Nick pointed out, with what the games look like, what we want the state of Wyoming to look like. And that's why there was always resistance and pushback against anything that was similar to this style or presentation, you know? I mean, it's hard enough where we're at right now, supporting the horse industry with the HRs. To expand that does get into other people's territory, in my opinion, and gives us a, a different outlook of what we want the state of Wyoming to look at. So that's just my input on this.
Thank you for your input. Commissioner Schiffer?
Well, I guess, thank you. President Cavelo, I was trying to just get some clarification if, is, do we have a policy in this regard of the appearance of the games, or is this just an unwritten policy of the board, of the commission?
President Cavelo, Commissioner Schiffer, so there is not any sort of rule or policy that mandates how they look. That was just the precedent set by the commission earlier. HHR rules are one of the things that we've had much discussion about that needs to be promulgated. At this current juncture, we have two and a half pages of HHR rules. HHR rules will be something that we will be considering. But as, to answer your question, no, there's not currently anything that either says they have to look this way or that way, or anything like that.
If I may just follow up, Mr. Lind, you know, I guess, I, I don't have a big problem with the appearance of this thing, except for somebody who, you know, walks into the place, never been there before, says, oh, roulette, you know, I'm going to take my chance, which really that's what people do with roulette. Is there any thought of a, any kind of disclosure on the machine or otherwise, that, you know, this really isn't roulette, it's just plain old HHR? I, you know, we're trying to figure out where we are on this thing.
That concern was, was raised by Mr. Laramendi, and the solution we came up with for that was to, to open the horse racing interface to make sure, that, that is the disclosure, in my opinion. It is showing this is not regular roulette. As far as additional language on that screen, certainly I'm, I'm, those are easy things to, to consider. But our disclosure solution is to show that it is a horse racing product on the screen when you approach the game.
Commissioner Broussard?
I just have a quick question, but it's to our staff. Have, have you guys seen the machine physically? Have you touched it, manipulated it? No?
President Cavelo, Commissioner Broussard, no, we have not. I've seen a similar one from a different vendor, but not this one. President Cavelo, if you, if you want, I can go through some of the stuff that I have written in, in the report as well, just to maybe.
Thank you. Please do.
Clarify a little bit of, of things here. So on this system, the commission rates on this is anywhere between 1% and 5%. The report actually says 6% to 10%, that's a typo. So Interblock is not a current vendor in the state of Wyoming, so if approved, they would have to go through the licensing requirements to become licensed. Interblock is currently licensed in other jurisdictions in good standing. One of the things that I have in here, just to kind of understand, maybe it helped me at least for the handicapping part of it, you pick the fifth race, so when you put your money in, every horse is randomly assigned a number 1 through 36. No horses can receive the same number, so straight up, that's like you can't have, you know, one horse that has same two numbers. And after it selects those numbers, I think that one of the questions was, like, when you walk up to the terminal, the, and I wish I, I can maybe share it again, that might Share this screen. If you can see that, okay. So when you walk up and put your money in, this is what the player would see. So this, this area on the left is the handicapping data on it. So the player could go through that, handicap it, or if they touch off of it, it'll disappear, or they minimize it, it'll disappear, and they can throw a, a chip or bet on any color. I did have, when we first started talking about this, I did have some concerns with some of the, let's see if I can get my thing back, you know? Oh, there it is. I did express some concerns on the regulatory side with a few things. In your packet, you'll see a letter that I actually drafted and sent to Exacta and Interblock regarding this. It's on roughly page-ish. My packet's a little different, so. I don't know if I can get to it. Around 229. So there was some concerns on the original submission about the, the wagering aspect. One of the first renditions was kind of, it was a, the finishing order, plus there was additional criteria that had to be met. And that additional criteria was like midway through the race, like a position at a certain pole or a distance ahead. Wyoming statute defines paramutual wagering as the outcome of the event. So that's why this ended up going from a four-race to a five-race. In order to fill that board, you'd have to add another race to, to satisfy the, just the final outcome versus anything in the middle. There was also some questions on the, again, this is all on the first rendition, this is not this product. There was some questions about the ability for a player to exercise skill or judgment when they had the, the mid-race things that you had to kind of determine, position at the fifth pole or whatever. We didn't really see how any sort of statistical data could help a player determine a good pick for which horse was in the lead at this pole. So again, that was changed in this submission with the additional fifth race. And the last thing, I think I covered that one already, was the commission rules explicitly require that payments are made on the basis of the order of finish only. So they did make those changes to the product. I have expressed similar concerns with the appearance of the product. That's a, I guess, a policy decision for you all to make. I present it to you. You know, as far as the paramutual wagering, if you look on, again, I got to move even It's, you know, the, the product is conducted in conformity with Wyoming statutes 1125-101 through 113. It can only be used by a permitted operator, which would be the case. Can only be used in designated areas, which would be the case. A lot of the compliance issues, you know, the 18 and over, all of that stuff is status quo for the remainder of the things. It would only accept cash or cash vouchers. And it wouldn't, the terminal would not display any information that would allow the patron to identify the race prior to selecting their choices. It will make available the true and accurate past performance information to the patron prior to making the wager. After the patron finalized their wager, it would display the video replay, similar to all of the products that we have now. This would be an animated video, like you saw in that short clip. That use, it's the same animation on all of the Exacta Connect products that we have And with that, I would stand for any questions.
Any questions for Director Laramendi with regards to his comments? Yes, go right ahead.
President Cavelo, GLI actually had some of those same concerns with this system as we were testing it with the previous iterations of this system. And of course, we can't tell the manufacturers how to design their games, but we, we were very, pretty happy that Nick pointed out these things and that they did redesign the system like that, because I, I think we would have had trouble potentially issuing a certification letter on that. But with the system and the changes now, GLI was comfortable issuing that, that certification letter, because we do believe that it, it complies with all of the, the Wyoming statutes and regulations on HHR. So like, we shared those same, those same concerns, and, and based off of those changes, we were comfortable issuing that certification letter, that we do believe it. You know, we're not in a position to talk about, you know, the, the look on these games or some of those, those, the player interactions on the games. We're there to just, is it, you know, it's a fairly black and white issue, does this comply with the statutes and regulations and whatever jurisdiction we're doing testing for? And so that's why we, that's why we issued that letter, and, and we would stand behind that letter at this point. So, thank you.
Commissioners, anyone else with any comments or discussion, questions? Does anyone mind make a motion?
We're having discussion, but not motion. I'll make them, I'll move to, so we have to be in the affirmative area, so. Do we have to be in the affirmative? So we are going to, they're here to ask for approval of this, or is it an educational thing?
President Cavelo, this is seeking approval to offer this product in, in the state of Wyoming.
So I make a motion to approve the math model game.
We have a motion to approve the request. Do I hear a second?
No, second, a motion.
We have a second. We have a motion and a second. Discussion. Certainly.
I mean, you know, you look at these machines, and there's everything that you can imagine on the front of them that are enticing people to play them. So the, the fact that it, that it appears like a Vegas game or otherwise, to me, is somewhat irrelevant. I mean, if it complies with the requirements, I see no reason that people shouldn't be attracted to the, you know, the spinning wheel, even though that's not really what's going on.
Commissioner Broussard?
All right, I may disagree with you, Dan, sorry, but it, it may comply with the law, and we can, that's what staff does in GLI, but as commissioners, I think we're given the task to promote, to, to protect the industry. And we, we are representing the whole state of Wyoming. And in my case, if, if this, this growth, and sometimes out-of-control growth and changes, so far has not made the folks who disagree with gambling object. And I'm thinking, I'm ready at any moment for that to happen. And I'm, my, my concern is that we grow, we take one step too many, and the whole tent collapses. So I oppose this, not because I, I think it's illegal, I just oppose it because I think it's, it's growth that we've not, we're just pushing the margins too quickly, in my opinion. So that's where I'm at.
I'm going to agree with Commissioner Broussard. I think this goes against the intent of the legislature in promoting horse racing. I think that these guys have done a magnificent job of putting this together. They're doing their job, but I think this is not what we need in the state of Wyoming at this point. I think it also goes against the table games, I think are, are an affront to our neighbors with the Northern Arapaho and Shoshone, and I'm going to oppose this. with the Northern Appaloosa Shoshone, and I'm gonna oppose this. Commissioner Wildcat, floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted a quick clarification from Nick. You did say that Inner Block was not licensed?
President Cavelo, Commissioner Wildcat, they're not currently licensed in the state of Wyoming. I have their application on my desk, but they're not currently licensed.
Thank you.
Anyone else care to make a comment, discussions? Anyone from the public? Hearing nothing else, we proceed to vote. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay.
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 Okay, let's do a roll call just to be sure.
President Cavelo.
Nay.
Commissioner Torgerson.
Nay.
Commissioner Bull. Commissioner Schiffer.
Aye.
Commissioner Broussard.
Nay.
Vice President Rithaler. Absent. Commissioner Curra. Chief Francisco is excused. Commissioner Wildcat. President Cavelo, that is five noes and two yeses.
That motion is defeated. Okay, moving along, all of item 12 is on the consent agenda. We'll move to item 13.
Commissioner Cavelo, item 13A is online sports wagering rules, chapters one and eight. These were signed by the governor on the 16th of July. I have published the, the notice of adoption, updated all the rulebooks, the website's been updated with the new rules. Likewise, with the paramutual chapter three rules, those were also signed by the governor on the 16th and are now in effect. Those ones have also been updated on the website and in the rulebooks across the board. So, those two are, are done now. Item 13C, this is just some, I guess, discussion for thought or consideration, maybe how you want to handle this. Last year, at the completion of the safety inspections, we received several recommendations of things that the commission should consider in regards to track safety. I've gone through all of the recommendations in all three reports and compiled those. Those would ultimately affect paramutual rules, chapters two, six, and eight. I do have some draft language. I know at one time, we had kind of put together a committee to start working some rules. So, at any time that committee could meet and kind of review this and then give me some more direction, we can begin those paramutual rules with the recommendations for the safety. And then, of course, the next one would be the HHR rules as well. That's all I have for rule updates.
Thank you very much.
President Cavelo, item 15 is upcoming meetings and general discussion. 15A, our next meeting will be held September 19th. It'll be in person here in Casper, offered also on Zoom, live streamed on our YouTube channel. And then, we have our annual fall meeting, November 20th and 21st. It'll also be offered here in Casper, online Zoom and viewable on the YouTube channel as well. We will have some, it'll be, the structure of the fall meeting this year will be similar to that of last year. It'll most likely be a half day on the first, just some educational things. We actually have some pretty cool things that we might be able to bring in on that first day, things that we've never done before. And then, the 21st would be the, the general meeting stuff. That's all I have for the meeting, or for 15A.
Okay. And B. Do we have any general discussion or public comment? See, the folks from Cowboy Racing are here. Do you have anything for us today?
Will Edwards, Cowboy Racing, 506 Shoney Cheyenne, Wyoming. Since the special meeting, I have requested a clean and updated version of the contract for the electrical service for High West Energy. I am waiting for that. We, I am pleased to report real briefly that we have the base course down on the track and we will be installing the rail next. We're underway with our drainage improvements and everything's moving along just great. So, that's my report for today. Thank you for your support.
Thank you. Anyone else? I see at this time, we're set to break for lunch. Do we have to break for lunch or can we continue forward? Are those folks waiting for us?
President Cavelo, we will need to break for lunch. The presenter of those is scheduled to be here anytime between 12:15 past.
Okay, so then we'll break for lunch until 12:15. Those of you that want to come back, we'll see you then. Those of you that don't, thanks for coming. Yes, sir.
I am gonna excuse myself for the rest of the meeting. I'm fly fishing with my brothers in Saratoga, Wyoming, and I'm gonna go do that.
That's legitimate.
Yeah, I thought so too. Good to see all you guys, and I'll see you at the next meeting.
Thank you.
Hey, Mr. President.
Hello?
Hello?
Hey, Cactus, how you doing?
Good.
I listened to you folks this morning, but I couldn't, I didn't know how to unmute myself at that time.
Well, we're okay now. Thanks for joining us.
We're all relieved.
Yeah, apologize. I heard what you guys did. I just didn't, I didn't get to participate.
We did, we did good stuff or bad stuff. We're not sure yet.
We could have used you, Reuben. Talked nice about you.
Sorta.
Commissioner Wildcat is, she's on already. She just has her video off.
Very good. Let's reconvene the meeting. Would you start with the role, please?
President Cavelo?
Here.
Commissioner Torgerson is absent. Commissioner Bull is absent. Commissioner Schiffer?
Here.
Commissioner Broussard?
Here.
Vice President Redhaller?
Here.
Commissioner Curra?
Here.
Commissioner Francisco is absent. Commissioner Wildcat?
Here.
Looks like we lost our liaisons. However, President Cavelo, you have a quorum.
Fantastic. Let's proceed. Item 16A.
President Cavelo, item 16A is a disciplinary action against licensed holder Uriel Dominguez Jr. This is a settlement agreement, and I will pass this on to Senior Assistant Attorney General, Mr. Marvel, for his presentation.
Good morning, Mr. President, members of the Commission. If I may, thank you for your time here today. Again, my name is Brian Marvel, the prosecuting attorney on behalf of the Commission. I just want to start with some general information that pertains to all three of the settlement agreements up for consideration today. These all stem from violations of Chapter 2, Section 2B, under corrupt practices, which prohibits a licensed individual from participating in any unsanctioned or otherwise illegal live flat track racing event. In all three of these situations, and I'll identify a little bit more specific information as it pertains to A, B, and C. But in essence, what happened was the Commission investigators had received information that these individuals had participated in an unsanctioned live flat track racing event. After investigation, complaints were initiated against these three individuals, and this resulted in the three settlement agreements that are before the Commission today. So in general, in relationship to these settlement agreements, it's kind of a standard format in that what is being proposed as part of the settlement is that there is a suspension of the license, but that license has stayed in effect for a probationary period. And the way that that probationary period was kind of determined was, you know, as you're aware, particularly with jockey license, with the three years, it's going to, that probationary period is going to run until the end of their existing license, at which point they'll have to renew. So that probationary period will be in effect during that timeframe. As part of the probationary conditions, there is an agreement that they will comply with the Commission's rules and regulations and that there will not be any participation or further participation in any unsanctioned or otherwise illegal live flat track racing events. So that's kind of the standard format that we're discussing here in relationship to all three of these settlement agreements. And I'll get to be here in a minute, but in relationship to Uriel Dominguez, his, the specificity of his. Now, they all did take place in Ogden, Utah, these racing events, these unsanctioned racing events did take place in Ogden, Utah. There was some difference, difference in relationship to the timing in relationship to Mr. Dominguez. This occurred on November 3rd of 2024. What I did forget to mention as well, in addition to the probationary period in term, is also the agreement that there is a fine in an amount of $3,000 to be paid within 60 to 90 days. So we'll be looking at the state suspension for a probationary period with a fine of $3,000. And so that's going to be standard. It's what we applied consistently for all three of these individuals because they're all, you know, in regards to the same rule violation. And so again with that, you know, this, when it comes to Mr. Dominguez, the investigation didn't conclude that on November 3rd, 2024, in Ogden, Utah, he participated in an unsanctioned or otherwise illegal life flat track racing event. And we are proposing the terms, which I've outlined for you as part of the settlement agreement. So in relationship to Mr. Dominguez, docket number 250043, I would respectfully request- I would respectfully request that the Commission approve this settlement. And obviously, if there's any questions, I'm happy to answer that on behalf of the Commission members.
So in regards to this particular person, then we have additional scrutiny. We look for him at other tracks, or what, is he now under the microscope? If he fails to follow the rules, then the stay is lifted and the suspension is enacted even to the point where the license is, is taken forever? Is that the next step?
Well, that would be, we'd bring it, further disciplinary action, but the stay would be lifted, yes, if there is, if there is a further violation, or we become aware of a further violation after the Commission approves that. Not only would the stay be lifted, but on, in consultation, obviously, with the, the staff, with the Commission, whether or not to seek further disciplinary action maybe, you know, yeah. And so at that point, the suspension would remain in effect. So, thank you.
Anyone with any other questions? Commissioner Schiffer?
Thank you, President. Mr. Marvel, so if, like, say, one of these jocks got caught with illegal substance or a buzzer or something, is that, would that spring the withdrawal of the probation?
Yes.
Not just racing and, and safety?
Yes, it would. If you look at part of the, specific to this individual, and again, this is consistent throughout, but part of the stipulation and part of the order that the Commission will be entering is in relationship to, excuse me, give me one second. So part of the conditions in relationship to that is obviously that they will not participate in any unsanctioned racing events again, and that they shall abide by the rules and regulations of the, of the Commission. And specific to your question, any violation of the Commission rules which results in a suspension, including suspensions issued by the Board of Stewards, shall be deemed a violation of this order. So, so that is incorporated in there. So it's not just limited to these, these types of racing events. It is more expansive that than that and provides for all of the Commission's rules and regulations.
Mr. President?
Commissioner Curra?
This gentleman now on probation for three years, is he allowed to do any racing in the state of Wyoming?
Yes. I mean, that's what the, the state probationary term is, is in favor of, yes.
He's suspended, but then that suspension has stayed, so he can race?
Right. I didn't know if that was just a...
Fine's not suspended, though.
President Cavelo, just so you know as well, this agreement was submitted to Mr. Dominguez. Mr. Dominguez has reviewed this, and Mr. Dominguez has signed off on it. So that would just, it's all up to, to you all now.
Any other questions from the Commission? I'm looking for a motion to accept.
I move to accept the agreement with Mr. Dominguez.
You have a motion on the floor. Do I hear a second? You have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Do we ask for outside discussion, or this strictly our deal? Strictly us, okay. No further discussion. We'll proceed to vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion carries. Thank you. Let's go to sixteen B.
Thank you, Mr. President. Now, this is going to become a little bit, almost prophetic in the sense of some of the questions that were being answered. This case involves Jesus Venezuela, docket number twenty-five zero zero four six. Mr. Venezuela did, in fact, sign this agreement. However, there are complications that have arisen since the signing of this agreement. Following execution of this agreement, Gaming Commission personnel received information that Mr. Venezuela had engaged in a second unsanctioned live flat, or tre, unsanctioned racing event. What I can tell you, in the, in the interest of fairness, is that is in the process of going through the proper procedure from, proper procedure, and providing Mr. Venezuela time to respond and allow for the appropriate due process. So we are in that process right now. And so because of this complication, and as indicated previously in response to one of the questions, is if, you know, the timing of this makes things a little bit complicated. But based on this, because we do, again, this is alleged, and Mr. Venezuela will have the opportunity for due process, the opportunity to contest these allegations, as well as, you know, a contested case hearing if he so chooses. But based on the fact that we have information, and which is sufficient enough for us to initiate disciplinary process, we're requesting, at least on this, or I'm requesting, I should say, at least on this, that the agreement be denied so that both, both matters can proceed under the procedures provided under the Commission rules, giving Mr. Venezuela the opportunity and due process afforded to him. I also did, I will indicate that I had informed the Venezuela, informed them that I would be taking this position here in front of the Commission prior to the meeting, a couple of weeks ago, that I would be doing this. And so, but that is my position, given the fact that we have, again, sufficient enough basis for us to bring disciplinary action. Again, it's alleged at this point, and that will come before the Commission. But based on that, I'm asking that the settlement agreement not be approved at this point in time because of the second, the second issue that we have that's developed since signing the agreement.
Thank you, Mr. Marvel.
President.
Go ahead, Commissioner Broussard.
So I would like to make a motion, but can I make a motion to deny the agreement? Is that?
Yes.
Okay, well, I'll make the motion to deny the agreement.
The motion on the floor. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
You have a second. Let's discuss. Let's discuss. Any discussion? Commissioner Schiffer?
So we don't go, get out of here too early. It hasn't started to snow. Can we kick the can down the road and say, you know, defer it till, till we find out what happens in the other case? So if you want to follow through on this in case it doesn't have a good result, that we could still enforce this agreement.
Well, there's, there's several problems that, from the prosecution side, that I see with, I see with that. First, first, in relationship to this agreement itself, part of the underlying conditions were in agreement that he abide by, you know, the, the rules and regulations. And what I should point out is, in Mr. Venezuela's case, he, the one which the agreement was premised on, the date of that was November third, two thousand twenty-four. And at no time during the, the course of discussions or anything like that were we aware of anything. However, we did subsequently become aware that the same conduct had occurred, or allegedly had occurred, in later November, that towards the end of November. And if I'm not mistaken, because I don't have everything in front of me, it would have been a different state at that point in time. And so part of my, the, what I'm struggling with, or the, what my concern is, is if we have to enter into this agreement and then go back, what, how, how does that factor in into the process, due process, all those requirements? So the plan is to pursue both matters simultaneously. While they'll have different docket numbers, they're going to be pursued simultaneously in that way. So.
Any further discussion? Any further discussion?
Sorry.
Go right ahead.
So it doesn't make, are we going to see this agreement again, possibly, in addition to another agreement?
No. Commissioner, that, I can't, I can't, honestly, I can't speak to...
Does it make more sense to table this agreement?
We could certainly, that could be another option as well. Yes.
What's easiest for you?
At this point, tabling it would be, that would be probably, although I hadn't thought about it, that might be preferential until we can work some other, until, again, because I want to afford Mr. Venezuela the proper procedure and due process and everything like that. So, you know, and then in consultation with the Executive Director and other members of the Commission staff, I don't, I don't specifically have any issues with tabling it until the other part of that portion proceeds.
Well, in light of that, I would like to withdraw my motion to deny.
Would you like to withdraw the second?
Are we, are we going somewhere?
The second has been withdrawn.
Are we hurting you?
I would, I would withdraw my second.
President Cavelo, this one is a little bit more unique. This individual has actually paid the three thousand dollar fine.
Wait, I'm, we're still on Jesus.
Yep.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, so we actually have currently a check in our office for the three thousand dollar fine. And I don't know if this was tabled. If I can return that back to him, I don't think I can while it's tabled. Versus if it's just denied at this point in time, then I can just give him his check back. So he's not out three thousand dollars while the process continues.
He's not out anything if we haven't cashed the check.
True.
I don't know.
You know something about that, but...
See him again.
Or the three thousand dollars.
And, and I, maybe I can address this. So I don't think that denying the agreement as it is written now, necess, well, it certainly doesn't preclude us from, if that's the direction it goes, from bringing this up to incorporate, again, both allegations in front of the Commission, something might be differentiated. But it also doesn't preclude us from pursuing, pursuing them through the normal course of proceeding. So again, I think it's really up to the Commission. I'm comfortable working with either direction, but really, it should be about what the Commission is comfortable working with. Because for either, either circumstance, you know, I'm amenable to working under those conditions and proceeding as necessary. So.
Well, me and the guy in charge of the motion, it's your call.
So I guess my question is, if we deny this, then he has, is there anything that's restricting him from racing right now?
No.
So he can continue to race, even though we know he's been caught on two occasions, possibly?
Yes, because of a couple of reasons. One is under the Wyoming Administrative Procedures Act. There can't be a revocation or a suspension of the license in the state of Wyoming without a contested case hearing first. And so, yes, ultimately, if, if this is denied, he will have the license, and he will be able to. And the process does take, take some time. I will admit that because under the rules, there are some, you know, there are particular to this. It's maybe not, in comparison to maybe like skills games, there's a very clear outlined procedure. So in, in this situation, it's a little bit unique. So in this situation, we issue a notice of complaint, a complaint, there's twenty days to respond to that. After that, then we have to issue a notice of intent, and then the notice of intent, and then we file a petition and complaint with the Commission. So it is a longer process on this, on this side, because there's not an effective mechanism, again, what I'll use in reference to the skill games, where we can simply file a notice of hearing in the skill games. So this process will take some time, if, if, if I'm being honest. Yes.
Now I've messed up.
What's easiest for staff?
Commissioner Schiffer?
Why can't we approve the agreement, then you just suspend the guy for breaching the agreement?
That's certainly an option as well.
I mean...
Well, I think...
You know, he's a big boy.
If I'm not mistaken, this agree, he, he agreed to the agreement after the other infraction?
Yes.
Yeah, so I mean, he, he just...
So, so does, so does the agreement then become retroactive back that'll catch that second one? Or then does the second one become moot?
I don't think the second one becomes moot, and that's where the, that's why I mentioned, like, the timing problem. Because here's, if, so what I would say to this from a legal perspective is, if I'm in negotiations for a settlement agreement, and it's pertaining to this particular, like, you know, the intent of the agreement is to cover and ensure no future conduct occurs.
Forward.
Right. However, in saying that, I also think there's a good faith argument that at least it should have been disclosed to us, because we're basing the agreement on one. We're not basing the agreement on two. And so what I would say is, the agreement would cover, cover the conduct that occurred on November third, if I'm not mistaken. However, there was a second violation, and so, or alleged violation from our position. And so for that, there is a basis to move forward with disciplinary action on that. So it does get a little convoluted. I'm not disagreeing with you because the agreement was executed after all, after this alleged conduct occurred and these two incidences. And so that's the reason why initially I had approached Commission staff and approached you with the, with the supposition that this should be denied from the perspective of, in good faith, this agreement would have not been negotiated and entered into in this manner had we known about both.
So hypothetically, if you would have known about both, what would have been the difference in the, hypothetically, what would, would it?
Well, I'd have to consult with the Commission staff on that, but for, for my basis, two of them, I don't know that, just, again, this is the attorney speaking, not with the Commission, the Commission staff, but I don't know that with two, there would, we would have entered into a settlement agreement, to be honest with you.
So for all we know, the other guys may have another infraction, but we don't know about it.
That's correct.
We're just assuming a lot of things.
President Cavelo, if I can, or if I may, real quick, like Mr. Marvel said, had we known both of them, I wouldn't have recommended a settlement. This would have just moved to a full hearing in front of you all. So if, if this were to be denied, that's what would happen next, is we would do a notice of, I think it's a notice of setting, and we would set a hearing before you all. We would present all of the evidence for both violations before you all, and then you all would determine the sanctions against them. And keep in mind, with these three, these three are kind of being, or two, I guess, two and a half, are being resolved right now. We have several others that will be coming before you as full hearings, because we have not entered into settlement agreements or offers at all. Those ones will come for full hearings. So.
So what's going to happen anyway?
Well, I'm going to echo Mr. Broussard's first motion. I, I move that we deny the settlement agreement
Okay.
for Mr. Valenzuela.
Okay, we're back to that. Ruben, are you going to keep your second in place?
President Cavelo, yeah.
Okay.
It will, it sounds like it will need a hearing. Sounds good. Thank you.
All right. So we have a motion and a second on the floor, neither of which has been fully rescinded, considered, but not. So that being said, we're in a position now where we're ready to vote. You okay with this, Mike?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
All aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Okay. Passes.
It's denied.
It's denied. Motion passes, and the settlement's denied. On to item sixteen C, Julian Zavala.
Thank you, Mr. President. This one is pretty much identical to the first one, so not the issues that we had with the last one. This one, again, involved a jockey, a jockey license for participating, as mentioned earlier, in an unsanctioned racing event in Ogden, Utah. This time, the date is a little bit different. It's on October sixth of two thousand twenty-four. And again, I think the only difference is, is that the individual is given the opportunity ninety days, which is about a thirty day increase from the previous one, as far as the time to pay the fines. But everything else is going to remain the same. It will be a state suspension. That suspension and the, the probationary term will run from December, or to, through December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-seven, which time the individual's license renewal will be up for that. And again, the same conditions as previously discussed. And so, again, there's not much distinction between this and the first, other than the, the timeframe of when the, the race occurred. So based on that, my recommendation, or what I'm asking from the Commission, is that they go ahead and approve the settlement agreement and order for Julian Zavala, docket number twenty-five zero zero three six.
Thank you, Mr. Marvel. All right. We have a recommendation in front of us. Board, what is yours?
My pleasure. I shall move we accept the agreement.
We have a motion to accept. Do I hear a second?
I'll start.
We have a second. Is there any discussion? We have a second. Is there any discussion? If none, we proceed to vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, nay. Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, members of the.
Thank you, Mr. Marvel. We appreciate it very much. Director Laramie, do we have anything else before the Commission today?
President Cavelo, the last thing on these that I'd like to just point out, these two that were just approved, we've had multiple conversations with these individuals. I think they're well aware of what happened, and I remorse. I really think that it's probably not going to happen again for these two.
You put the fear of the Commission in them?
Well, I think, in all honesty, I think these three have put this in the forefront of a lot of people's attention, and they see that these are being handled the way that they probably should be. So we're hoping that we don't have to deal with it much more. But these two specifically, I just wanted to point out that, you know, in conversations that I've had with both of them, I think that they are, they're both pretty remorseful and realize that, you know, the, the way that our racing industry has grown and the amount of money that we're running for now is well worth the.
Doing it right.
Doing it the right way, so.
So I do have a quick question, Mr. President.
Mr. Commissioner Broussard.
These names look familiar, but that doesn't mean much. Or do they race a lot on Wyoming tracks?
They do, yes. Yep. So the first, the first one is no longer a jockey. He's a, he's a trainer. So he holds a trainer's license, not a jockey's license. He used to be a jockey. He outgrew the jockey, the jockey license.
Well, if there's nothing more before the Commission, we will stand adjourned. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.